Start the meeting. Thanks, everybody for coming and Daniel will go ahead and do roll call.
Victoria in there?
Present.
Billy Malone. Wow, I see him.
He's here, yeah.
Dorothy Wong.
Present, sorry.
I, present.
Yep, Chris O'Malley.
Here.
Veronica Jones. Madeline Barber, myself, of course.
I'm here.
Yep, Doug Caulfire.
Here.
Hannah Petrie.
Here.
And.
Here.
Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Darrell, I do not see him yet, so I'm gonna put him down as absent.
He is supposed to be here.
Yeah, Alan Peck, I do not see.
Oh, here I am, I'm right next to you.
Oh, there you are, well, in your picture you are.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, and Amy Lindford.
Yeah, she has.
Excused, okay, so we do have a quorum, so.
Okay, so I mailed the agenda.
I'm also here, I'm a new guy, may not be on the list.
Oh, you weren't on the list, Donald.
Yes, Donald, sorry.
Sorry, don't mean to interrupt, but.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay, we're happy to have Donald join the, join the group. Yeah, so, welcome, yeah, and I guess, Dan, we need to add him to the.
He's on my minutes now, so.
All right, perfect, thank you, okay.
Darrell just showed up.
Yep, I see him, perfect.
Okay, so.
I find him a quorum.
Okay, so we're, I mailed out the meeting minutes, I'm sorry, the meeting agenda for September 7th, and I did not get any ask for changes, are there any comments, concerns? Okay, can I get a motion to approve them as distributed?
So moved.
Meeting agenda, thank you, second?
Second.
I second.
Okay, Victoria, all those in favor of approving the September 7th meeting agenda as distributed, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstain, okay, great, oh, we can say hi to Anne Hickambottom, who's here, bottom, who's here tonight as well. Okay, the, we're going to go to the minutes, which were distributed, I don't know, Veronica, did you get any updates or anything?
I didn't get any comments.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to approve them as distributed?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as they were distributed.
Second.
Okay, Darrell seconded, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes as distributed, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Donald, were you at the last meeting?
I was, and I abstained from the last one because I had not been at the.
Oh, good, perfect, 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 okay, okay, all those opposed, say nay. Abstain? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, we have quite, while it doesn't look like we have a whole bunch on the agenda, what we do have, we'll have quite a lot of discussion, so I'm actually going to skip any kind of a chairman report tonight, because we're gonna concentrate on the items that we're reviewing. So I'm going to move on to the 2214 North Windsor Avenue project, which we are reviewing because the zoning for that property is not set up to be able to take mixed use. So they're asking for an exception to the usage for that property, which is what we're reviewing from a pure perspective, so the, if they comply with all of the CSD building requirements and, you know, zoning requirements, I'm sorry, building requirements, we would not have to be reviewing this, we're reviewing it because of the usage. So having said that, though, it's important that we review the property appropriately. So Veronica, I know you and Darrell have done a bunch of work on this, so if you wanna go ahead and explain the project and.
Darrell, you wanna start?
Yeah, so it's a proposed three-story mixed-use development that includes a temporary leasing officer, lot leasing office, which will eventually be, once it's all leased out, that it will be part of the, the retail space. There is gonna be a retail space and an open parking garage on the ground level, 54 residential units on levels two and three, include, which includes 2% or 5% of union units at a low-income level, and the project does include housing incentives. So Veronica and I both delivered, well, we had delivered over near about 300 flyers to the neighborhood. We went knocking on doors to everybody sitting that lived next door immediately. Today Veronica spoke with the owner of Gordy's Garage, and there has been fixed, mixed reviews, mixed feelings about the building, some people voting no, some people saying it's great. There was that meeting that, that happened on that Saturday, unfortunately, I was working, teaching a class for my union, so I was not able to attend, but good lady Veronica took care of the, that meeting, and she spoke, she got many suggestions, 92 of them, as, from over 100 Altadena and Pasadena residents in attendance. The main concern being traffic and sidewalks, and I believe the, in the, in the proposal, they have sidewalks and, and a 30-foot setback for the building, so to ease, ease that part. So there were letters received from two neighborhood organizations, but there seems to be conflict and from that as well, some from, the letters from the organizations were not necessarily in support of this, but there were members from those organizations that said they were. So there's consent, concerns about the buildings, but, about the height of the building, but this is what we're, what we're dealing with, is a minor conditional use permit. They want to change the property to go from a commercial manufacturing property to a mixed-use residential property, so it's a down, and so that's what we're doing here. They've done a lot of work, they're providing extra parking spaces than what's required by the state, by county and state, and they're doing a lot of landscaping, they are gonna be landscaping to screen the neighbors with trees, so those tree, trees, the neighbors that are immediately affect, affected by this, there will be landscaping there to, so that they will not have the building residence privacy impinge, impinge, they will not be bothered by that, and that is already in their design process. So, and that was one of the concerns from one of the neighbors that we spoke to, a very, a very good, nice fellow, and he said that was his main concern, the, I didn't write down his address, but he's the second house from the corner, third house from the corner, sorry, so on, on, not on Alberta, but on Atchison, I think it is, right, Veronica?
Archwood.
Archwood, there you go, so, yeah, like that, there's a lot, there's a lot here. We did a lot of work on it, Veronica has been extremely, extremely hardworking on this, and, and a lot of outreach to the community.
Okay, so Diane, do we wanna do the presentation now? And I wanna introduce the owner, Dr. Tyson.
Hi, everyone, Kevin Tyson here, thanks so much for having me tonight. Thanks for considering the project.
Yeah, sure, and did you make, or does you have a screen to share, do we need Chris to allow him to?
Okay, he's not doing the presentation. Mr. Kluger is, but, okay.
Presentation, yes, and we do have a screen, and hopefully you can see it, after Mr. Tyson's finished, we'll do a short presentation about the.
Okay, that's great, thank you, perfect.
Just a few words about myself, team, I'm from Pasadena slash Altadena. I grew up on Washington Boulevard across from St. Luke Hospital. My father was a physician here in town for a long time before I came to practice. We're happy to be members of the community and happy to participate in a number of other development projects that are local. Mr. Kluger and his team, we've worked with them for over 25 years in development of our projects. The ones that are most close to us are the ones that are there across from the hospital as an example of our work. Our desire is to hopefully improve the neighborhood with our development, and we're hoping that you all will consider giving us approval tonight with the hope of improving the general vicinity of where our property is, and the hope of spurring future developments and improvements of that general area in light of the fact that it's fallen a little bit below some of the other areas around, just, just our thoughts. So thank you so much for listening, Mr. Kluger is gonna give you a little bit of an overview of the project.
I'm Chuck Kluger, the architect, I have seen some of you before on the previous land use meetings, JP's gonna share a screen here. What I'm gonna show you today, if you didn't attend the August 21st meeting, is some of the changes that were made from the first land use meeting that we had on July, on June 1st. So just to, just to give you a little bit of summary, on May 11th, we had our one-stop meeting with the county. On June 1st, we had our land use informal meeting, if you remember, and then July 7th, we had kind of another informal land use meeting with, with just reiterating some of those items that were concerned from the first meeting, and then, of course, on the August 21st, we had the general public meeting in which over 100 people attended. So what you see in front of you now is basically changes that we had made from the first land use meeting. Some of the comments were very appropriate that we got from land use meeting, as well as from the surrounding neighborhoods and neighborhood groups, so what you're looking at is the front elevation from Windsor. You can see as, as we had mentioned, there's a 30-foot setback, 30 feet, which is about three stories sideways, so there's a parklight setback in the front that is adorned with trees, we have benches, a place that people can, can walk their dogs, hang out, and then we've got the building behind it. We have seven architectural elements that we've incorporated in the project, and this came from the original land use meeting. We, we listened, we took those comments to heart, we changed the palette from, from something that was more bold to something more subdued and earthin colors. We have Beckett of Ron Iron grills, fences, we articulated awnings, we have some balconies, balconies are on all sides, as well as all the seven architectural elements. We have the plaza, as I said, in the front, and raised planters. We also took into account some of the comments that were made about trying to do something local here, something unique to Altadena. So we're looking to incorporate some indigenous rocks into the, into the facade, as well as, in our research, some people were saying, hey, you should take a look at the history of Altadena, and, and when we did that, we discovered that poppies are really prevalent throughout the hills. So what we decided to do is have a poppy art motif out of metal grills to adorn the side of the building as you come into the entrance, and then we're gonna use that same metal with poppies to hide the parking, and I'll show you that on the next slide. So what you're seeing there is basically two stories of retail, of one story of retail and two stories of residential units, four across the front on each floor and nine back, and the reason there's not 36 per floor is because we have a, a big, open grassy area inside the building that I'll, I'll explain. But you can see the small amount of retail on the front, that retail is required as part of a mixed-use project, so we have about 2,100 square feet of retail. Let's go to the next slide. So as you can see, the, the color palette changed quite a bit, so we're into more of these earthen materials. You can see the motif on the metal panels of the poppy, you can see the balconies now have a wood motif to it, so we've really took into account the nature and the comments that we were getting to try to do something more in tune with the nature of Altadena and the hills, and you can see that color palette really spoke to this. And we presented all of these in addition to the set that you have at the community meeting, next slide. This is the site plan, this is the first floor, you can see on the lower portion is a 28-foot wide drive aisle, and the reason it's 28 feet is because we have power lines along that south property line. If you go out there, you can see them between us and Gordy's next door, so we can't build anything within a certain amount of, of distance to that. So that's also our fire lane and our ingress and egress, but some of the great things is that you can see that green portion in the front off of Windsor is all landscape, it's all grass area, trees, and you can see the same grass and trees also on the north side that'll basically cover that whole north, sorry, some alert coming through, that north property line. And then that north property line also has a 15-foot setback. So the site plan indicates green area in the front, the gray area will be the retail portion, and then the rest of the first floor is parking with the residential above it. We have, as you heard, we have 80 parking spaces, only 72 were required. We tried to fit as many as we can on the single floor without having to have a second floor parking, and it worked actually quite well. And we kept that north side all grass, there is no driveway on that side, it's purely landscaping that separates us and the adjoining neighbors, let's go to the next slide. The second, this is the second floor, the second and third floor are basically the same, they're the residential units, as you can see, four across, nine down. They're a mixture of studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom, that green area in the center is open to the sky, that's where the balconies look down into, we've got large trees growing in that area. We're trying to make this as green and, and allow light to come in to bathe those units and bathe, bathe that interior space so that people can go out there and enjoy it and have their own land, green and garden area within the building itself. Next slide. This is the building section, if you were to cut the building right in half on the long end of it, the first floor, as you can see on the upper slide, let's go through the first one, we cut through building number one facing west. You can see the open area in the middle, that's grass area, and then you can see to the right, these are the adjoining homes. We have the 15-foot setback from the property line, there's a great masonry wall that's already there, that's already well landscaped with shrubs. If you came out to the August 21st meeting, you would have seen, there's a beautiful line of hedge that we wanna keep, and then we wanna put some trees in there also, we wanna strategically use trees to block any view of looking down into the neighbor's backyard, and that was a concern that we heard from the neighbors. So we're looking at some Canary Island pines, some tall trees that can grow six stories. We've got basically a three-story building, they may grow twice as tall as the building. So the idea is that would completely block that view, and then you can see on the right side, you can see the driveway. This, the, cut through the building number two, you'll see the, you'll see the actual open space in the middle. The first floor is all parking, and then you see the residential units up above, and to the left, you can see the small portion of the retail, and then outside the retail, you see the grassy area before you get to Windsor. And then the lower is basically an isometric of what it really looks like, cut through it in half. You can see the units up above and the parking down below. And then let's go back to the first slide, so just to reiterate a couple things, I think that, that are important is, we really took to heart the comments that were made in several meetings, this, this is number five, this is our fifth meeting, and our first presentation, the actual formal presentation, so we're glad we're able to present this today. But we have 80 parking spaces versus 72 required, we have 35 bicycle spaces. We have an open space requirement of only 10%, but we've doubled that. The 10% requirement is a little bit less than 5,000 square feet, we have over 10,000 square feet of open space. And we have a landscaped area in front of the building that's 30 feet wide. Our FAR is less than one, we're .91, and then we've doubled the amount of required trees. We need, we need three trees per 10,000, we have almost six per 10,000. So the comments were taken to heart, and, and what you see is what we think is a culmination of a, of a great project that's been a collaborative effort between the land use committee and the community and, and our client, Dr. Tyson and his family, so with that, I'll turn it back to Veronica.
Okay, thank you, Diane, should we read letters now, or do what?
Um.
Hey JP, could you please stop sharing your screen?
Okay, sorry, I know, I was on mute, I know, I know. Um, no, I think what we should do is see if anybody on the council has any questions while, while we're, you know, in that mode, go ahead, Chris.
Dorothy, you're next. I, I got three, two, four, Mr., I've already forgotten your name, and it's right there, I'm sorry, Mr., where am I looking?
There, Tyson.
There you are, Mr. Tyson. The, the, okay, the, the, the mixed-use space, is it just retail, or can, can it be zoned for food too? Like, could you get restaurants in there?
Uh, yes, we could zone it for food, our desire is to have something that works with the residential component, you know, it could be, could be anything from a Jaba Juice to workout for the residents, could be dry, but we just don't know, it's a small component.
But not a liquor store.
Not a liquor store.
If you wanna know that it won't be a liquor store, then it will, it will not be a liquor store.
Well, and if there, if there were a liquor store, you'd be back here.
Yeah, and we would all say no.
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have to come back here, anyway, okay, thanks for that.
But hopefully something high-end to be able to have it benefit the whole area.
So my second question is, you've got 80 parking spaces, you only need 72, did you only need 72 because you need one per unit? Is that, is that what it is?
It was a mixture, because, part of that is, is a one per unit, and then also we had a mixture of retail requirements, and we had some incentives also.
Okay, so how many units are there total, sorry, I know you said.
54.
54, and you've got 72 spaces for it, okay, and my last question's for Diane, actually.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, we're, they're here because we need to rezone into a mixed-use, and it's commercial right now, right?
It's not a rezoning, Daniel, do you wanna explain, can you explain that to everybody?
Yeah, so the thing is, is anytime you wanna put residential in a CM-zoned property, it requires a conditional use permit, because normally in other areas of county, you don't have residential right next to your commercial manufacturing. Altadena's unique in that we have a lot of R1 that butts up not only in CM properties, but also our, our regular C1, twos and threes, yeah, that's, everything else, let's put it this way, I have gone through the project with a fine-tooth comb, it complies with the CSD on everything. This isn't even a CSD thing, this is a county code.
So my question, my question then is, we're approving the, the living portion, we're, we're, we're right, we're, we're looking at the living portion, right?
We.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Oh, we are just saying that it is okay that they can put residential in the CM zone.
Correct.
Got it, okay, that's, that's what I thought, so if somebody came in and they wanted to build like a three-story tacky office building or something, they could do that.
By right.
By right.
Right, they wouldn't have, right, they wouldn't have to come before town council at all.
And if this was zone C1, two or three, they wouldn't be here either.
Right.
Okay, they could do mixed use there?
They could do mixed use there by right.
Okay, cool.
It is literally because of the manufacturing.
Right, that's why I said at the top of the meeting that it's, it's really what they're here for is solely because that the CM doesn't allow mixed use.
Got it.
And so all we're doing, we're not rezoning it, or we're not asking that, or they're not, I should say, they're not asking to have it rezoned, they're asking for an exception to the CM property.
And that exception is to have people live there, residential, yeah, got it, okay, cool, just wanted to make sure I was clear on that, thank you.
Okay, Dorothy, you had a question?
Well, so after hearing Chris and the answer, so we don't have any, are we not then asking questions about the actual presentation that we just heard?
No, what I, what I said at the beginning of the meeting is we need to keep in mind that what we're, what we've been asked to do by the county is look and see if it's okay for us to have mixed use in that property. However, it gives us an opportunity to, anytime we have something come before us, we have an opportunity to ask questions and look at this. And I think that the fact that the owner and, and architect without really having to do a lot of this has really gone out of their way to, to listen to what the, you know, residents had made comments about and have, have done some extra changes as a result of that, but it's not required. But yes, absolutely, we can ask questions and understand the project.
Okay, thank you, if someone else can ask a question really quick, my dogs are wrestling in here right now.
Okay, Hannah, go ahead, Hannah.
Thank you, I think you said there's 5% affordable housing units planned, was that, is that right, 5%?
Five, five affordable units.
Five.
Five of them.
Okay, and what?
About 10%.
Oh, it's 10%, that's great, is there any flexibility on that, can it be raised or not really?
Well, it's always a possibility, but right now that, that is the standard, and that's the standard that we've designed it to.
Okay, thank you.
So one thing I wanna add, because if you don't know about the other project that's going on, which is totally separate, if, if they increase low income, they get exceptions to the CSD and can make the building bigger, taller, et cetera, without any input, so be careful what you ask for.
That's exactly right, Billy, you're on mute.
I'm on mute, Billy.
On the application, and this, I'm, I was, I'm looking at the wrong one here, I'm going back to the application. It states that the building had two, and they're applying for an increase in height from 30 feet to 45 feet by adding the low-income housing, and on the application, it states three units, not five. Is that, am I looking at the wrong one, or is that, is that being changed, or is that an old one? It says by, yeah.
JP. If I may, the original application stated three, and we comment, we got comments after the application from planning and corrected us to five units, because originally we thought it was 5%, but it has, actually has to be 10%, so it runs off to, to five units.
And what about, what about the height, because it mentions by adding those units, the height is going from the, from the required 30 foot to 45 feet, to add the extra level of units.
So from the original Altadena code, if you can help me, Daniel, the name of it is the 1980s version.
The CSD, the old CSD.
Yeah, all C S E, the, the property is zoned as a business park, and the maximum height, I believe, is to, it's 35 feet, and, and it's two levels. So by, by using the incentives, the housing incentives, you're allowed to go higher as a mixed-use project, and increase one more level.
And, and let's keep in mind too, Billy, just so you know, the, the top of the roof is at 35 feet, we're going 45 because we have an elevator, and the elevator penthouse goes higher, that's the.
Correct.
Okay, so the building is.
And it's less than 20%.
Yeah, our CSD, yeah, our CSD allows less than 20%, 20%, up to 20% for elevators, fire type things, and so.
But it's not the whole floor, is that right, I mean, it's.
That's where the elevator is.
Right.
Because you need the, and that is built in.
Except, except where it's required for accessibility, like the elevator.
Right.
Yeah, okay, because you did even mention at the beginning, that you made the front yard setback was 30 feet, which is a standard three-story distance of a building, and, I mean, you made it at the beginning, so I'm like, well, then if it's 45 feet, and even you mentioned 30 feet is three stories, what's the difference? But you answered it by stating that the three stories is 35 feet, it's the addition is for the added accessibility.
Right.
Thank you, thank you for.
For the elevator, correct.
Yeah, thank you for coming in.
Okay, were there any other questions, I don't know if I saw any other hands or not, oh, Dorothy, you're back, thanks, sorry.
Hi, thank you, so in, I just wanna ask some questions about the structure, so 35 feet, three stories, can you break down the height of the first story, like, how is that broken down?
Yeah, it, it was shown on my section, it's 15 feet and 10 and 10, so 15, 10 and 10 give you the 35. Yeah, it was shown on my section. It's fifteen feet and ten and ten. So fifteen, ten and ten give you the thirty-five. So the top of roof is at thirty-five and then, of course, higher for the elevator.
Right, so fifteen is the garage or the parking lot, so.
Yeah, we wanted it. We wanted that high once for the retail and then also for the auto to get the to so it would look like a better space than a short, narrow space. And we need to get ADA accessible vans down there. And and so that's why it's there.
The retail is also required to be fourteen foot clear.
Minimum, yeah. That's correct.
And then what is gonna happen on the roof? The elevator, is that gonna be a hang?
There's, there's nothing, there's no, there are no roof amenities. So it's basically your conditioning units and they're all screened. So you won't see any of those.
Okay. And then your parking lot is on the south side of the property, I mean, the driveway.
That's correct.
How are you? How how is that actually working out? Because it's so close to the intersection. How how does that, how? Have you guys thought about that? Like?
Yeah, we've actually, yeah. And in our one-stop meeting, Department of Transportation was there and we had that discussion with them. And they had thought because our drive aisle is twenty-eight feet, normal drive aisles are twenty-four to twenty-six and it's wider. They had suggested that at some time, maybe as a requirement when we get into planning, that a traffic study may be needed. And that may change the light at the corner in terms of the timing and it may change some signage. So that's yet to be determined, but they were okay with the width. Uh, and they were okay with the location. And we also had to get that with for the fire department.
Okay, thank you, because it seems difficult to be able to make a left turn out of there. Uh, because it goes from two lanes to one. So, you know, and obviously it's a traffic light, so cars are kind of shooting through, so to speak. So.
Right, right. Yeah. And what we have discussed that and and there's probably going to be some mitigating measures in order to solve that problem.
Okay, uh, let's see. Um, I'm sorry, is that one retail, uh, business that would be there in the twenty?
No, uh, there's about twenty-one hundred square feet and we can divide that up into any space we want. It could be one, could be two, could be three, but chances are it wouldn't be more than three because the space is narrow and small.
Okay. And then just, um, one last question. So, you know, just because of the nature of of the building being very different than, uh, the existing homes, did you guys, uh, ever look at another alternative that could have been, you know, perhaps two stories or, I mean, maybe that's not even a question to ask, but of the concerns of the residents, you know, who are pretty much single-story homes, um, around that and, um, you know.
Yeah, we did take that in, we did take that into account. And that's why you see on the north side, the the trees that are blocking the views as best as we can, but there were other incentives we could have taken also to make the project even bigger and we decided not to. So we wanted to be sensitive to that. And those were some of the comments that we that we did receive. But after speaking to some of the joint-in-homeowners, once I explained the trees where they're being located and the landscaping and the balconies, they seemed to be fine with it.
Yeah, and hopefully, uh, the traffic, you know, at that particular intersection, you know, it goes from a bike lane and then it sort of merges and then obviously Windsor. You know, so yeah, we'll see how the mitigation would play out there. And then the last question is, would you guys, uh, want to go any, like, are you going market rate on the ninety percent of the units? You know, so that's the ten percent. Could you go more affordable than ten percent?
Well, that was just asked and answered.
Sorry, I'd be happy to speak to that a little bit.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, we've had questions about whether it would be possible to have condominiums, uh, whether it would be possible to have, uh, senior housing, uh, more affordable housing. Uh, certainly, uh, myself and my family, we're open to all of those options. But, uh, the reality is that we don't know and I don't know yet exactly the cost of the building. And so before I can determine the, you know, which revenue stream to say is the most, we're most confident in, you know, we still have to go to the next stage, which is to price this in one of the highest priced environments that we've had in a long time. But to that point, we're not opposed to it, but I don't know the answer to that definitively because of the math, right? We don't know what the break-even point is based on changing from ninety, ten, that ratio, but certainly would be open to it as we went further.
Yeah, and Dorothy, I think actually that question was answered while you were away for a minute. The the reason that the building at Lincoln and Figaroa is able to be five stories high is because they have more affordable housing. So be careful what you ask for.
Well, I guess my point would be that there are other types of, um, you know, affordable homes that aren't high-rise apartments that or seem to be also a suitable oppor- opportunity, you know, like tiny homes, for example, you know, just different, just different creative ways that fit in until we actually do something at a significant level of mitigation or infrastructure to really change our intersections. And at this point, the county is not moving fast enough.
Okay, yeah. In this case.
Dangerous situations.
Right. And and so I think you'll find that in the, um, the motion that Veronica's gonna make, that she will mention a traffic study in there. So.
Yeah, and then I got you. The last thing is, uh, because I just want to say this out loud, because this is, we haven't really, you know, we're unincorporated in theory. But the all of these projects that are coming up, no disrespect whatsoever to you, um, Mr. Tyson and and all of your great staff.
Tyson, Dr. Tyson.
Okay, and, uh, sorry. And so at the end of the day, um, you know, we haven't really, we don't have a plan. We don't have a community plan. It's been a long time. And when you look at these types of, um, you know, uh, investments into larger uh, units or buildings, the infrastructure around it isn't there. And you look at places like Playa Vista, I'm just throwing that out there, you know, where they have master planned the community and other communities. So in Altadena, we're in just a really unique situation where we're not really master planning ourselves. And so we are reactive. And so that's my, I just wanted to make that comment.
Well, and I think it's, I think it's important to note that we're all familiar with the efforts that are being done with the Housing Authority. And the Housing Authority and the that project that's being driven by the state and worked on by the county is to identify a certain percentage of commercial properties that that will be converted by code and by zoning to mixed use in all of LA County by the end of the year. So, um, there, that's the, um, you know, there there will be many, many more properties in Altadena that will be rezoned, actually rezoned to mixed use. So that that's not part of this discussion tonight. If you want to, you know, have a a a community planning discussion later on, Dorothy, we can do that. But tonight, we're just looking at this one property. And and that's what the county's asking us to do.
One last thing. So the opportunity at this intersection is is an opportunity. So I just want to say that out loud because it connects state roadways, Pasadena and LA County. So if we really want to, this project has that potential to really improve the area, improve the intersection and have this collaboration. Um, so I'm throwing it out there publicly now because it might not get mentioned again, but Caltrans actually has an active transportation department now and moving by different modes and abilities are are a priority. So that particular road, Woodbury, which has three hundred percent higher traffic collisions and the majority of our pedestrian fatalities in Altadena needs to get improved and it's actually in that scope. So this project could be a win-win situation and an opportunity for the multi-levels of our government to.
Thank you. And to to add to what you just said, um, you know, from my standpoint and my family's standpoint, we would love to participate in helping to redevelop all other parcels near us that are in similar state. Uh, obviously, this is our first, my first, uh, step into the ring and hoping to bring a good project that could help to redevelop it. But if you looked across the street from where this property is, where we have empty land there, otherwise would likely be a great place for housing. Uh, Gordy's Garage next door, uh, would be a great place for housing. Uh, you know, all of those, I believe, could be the change and the trend of what you're mentioning in Woodbury, uh, because of its proximity to the freeway, to La Cañada, to that beautiful area there, I think is prime for being a a possibility. Just my thoughts, but I wear developer's things.
Thank you. Two last things. There is no transit there. So thinking how that comes in, there are no, like, Lincoln is the closest one to real transit at this point. And then, uh, shoot, I forgot the last one. But I I'm done for now. Thank you. Oh, bicycling collisions are are, if you look at the injury collision data, uh, Woodbury and Windsor, uh, are primarily bicycling injury collisions.
Right. We're gonna, that will be part of what we'll ask them to look at, Dorothy. Thank you.
Can I just quickly state what what to Dorothy, we have the new micro-transit. Every location is close to transit with the new micro-transit system.
Okay, don't, don't, okay. So, um, okay, so are there any other questions or concerns about the project before, Veronica gives us the information that she and Daryl gathered, um, from their due diligence?
It's a, it's a little gratuitous and I'll make it quick, but I just want to thank the both of you for really listening to us and incorporating our suggestions into your redesign. And you've been here like a hundred times. And each time I've seen the building, it looks nicer. And, uh, I think we all appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Veronica?
Okay, um, Daryl and I walked the neighborhoods and I think he told you we delivered over three hundred flyers. And we also had Shaq, everybody knows who Shaq is. He delivered at least another hundred and fifty flyers. So the word was put out. Um, at our meeting on, uh, the twenty-first of August, we asked that everybody write down their comments on, we gave cards and pieces of paper, um, to, uh, avoid a confrontation. So we thought that was the best way to do it. So, uh, we got, uh, as Daryl said, we got over ninety-something comments. Most of them were about traffic, their traffic concerns. Most of them had comments and suggestions. There were only, I think, five that said absolutely no. And there were two that were really rude that I just kind of took out of the pile because they were just rude. So, um, there, um, there was, uh, suggestions that there be no retail. There were suggestions that there be a coffee house. There was suggestions that, I think I sent most of them to you guys. So you had them to read and and you received most of them. So I received, uh, two, uh, two letters from two separate neighborhood organizations. And I don't know, should I read those, Diane, now? Now the time for the the public comment? Okay, okay. So, um, the first one is from the Windsor Royal Neighborhood Association. And it's to the Town Council Land Use. The Windsor, the Windsor Royal Neighborhood Association, WANA encompasses approximately three hundred residents along Windsor Avenue, west to the Arroyo. We are uniquely situated with homes in Altadena and Pasadena, direct proximity to the Arroyo where land use issues are a great concern. We oppose the mixed use development at two-two-one-four North Windsor, which will cause additional traffic congestion and safety issues. Windsor Avenue is one of the two access roads for JPL's six thousand-plus employees. During peak driving hours, it is nearly impossible for residents to access the street. Our neighborhood is already adversely impacted with traffic, noise and congestion from the two-ten freeway, passing a heliport, a manga visitors, JPO employees and LA County search and rescue helicopters in the Arroyo Basin. The high-density mixed-use development will ex- is exasperate traffic and congestion in the area and create additional safety concerns for pedestrians and neighborhood children who walk to school. The height and scale is inconsistent with the surrounding residential neighborhood character and the potential to lower property values. An endowment impact report is requested on traffic, cyclists and pedestrian safety, safety and the impact on the values of residential homes in the neighborhood with migration measures provided for, provided for issues identified. It is recommended that the development be reduced to two stories and conform to the West Altadena Emerging Emerging Planning Design Principles and Guidelines dated February twenty-fourth, two thousand and one. This is a product of Town Hall process and provides clarity on the community's wishes. We offer to work with the developer to address our concerns. Respectfully, the Executive Board. Okay, that was, um, the Windsor Arroyo. Now, I also received a letter from one of their members and I talked to several of their members. And this one is from Stephanie Tay. I'm a resident in Census Track forty-six-ten. My husband and I were at the meeting for the mixed-use property at twenty-two-one-four Windsor Avenue. First, let me apologize for some of my neighbors who were less than respectful towards some of the speakers. Unfortunately, this caused us to leave the meeting early. Hopefully, it got better. We are in support of this project. At the same time, as home homeowners, we understand some of the concerns of our fellow homeowners. Projects like this get a bad rap and usually bring down property values. And for many urban communities causes gentrification. This usually boosts property values and prices out the working class. To make a long story short, we would like to make contact with Dr. Tyson and his group. During his portion of the meeting, we found that both he and my husband attended Blair, Blair and USC Davis. Not sure at the same timeframe. Also, we'd like to know more about the onsite management of the property and offer some vendor possibilities. Thank you for your time and service to the community. And she lives directly across the street from the property. Okay.
I did read that. I reached out to both of them, just so.
Okay, great.
I didn't hear back, but I did reach out.
Great. And then I received a question from Nina Ing. Nina is in Cinch. And she asked, is this a green building? That was her question. Okay. And then I, the letter from Cinch says, me. Uh, Cinch has, uh, Cinch Neighborhood Association is a community of a hundred and sixty residents in the area that will be impacted by the proposed project at twenty-two-fourteen North Windsor Avenue. Cinch board members are willing to meet with the developer to the address, to address our concerns, which are the same as the as the points brought up by the Windsor Arroyo Neighborhood Association's letter. Cinch is in agreement, agree, agreeing, agreeance with the Windsor Royal Neighborhood Association. Thank you, Cinch Executive Board. And I also talked to members of Cinch because that's my block. We're in Cinch. My neighbors are for the development. And so, um, there's, you know, both sides, each organization has, are both sides of the the coin for this project. Okay. And this is, uh, this is, uh, from Carl Ing. He says, two thoughts and issues regarding Dr. Tyson's proposed project. A, they must guarantee each unit a parking spot, fifty-four slots in the underground uh, facility and an extra slot for fifty percent of the two-bedroom apartments, total of sixty-four parking spots. Can they assist in installing a curb and sidewalk on the east side of Windsor between Woodbury and Figaroa Drive, which is currently rocks and dirt? This parking issue is is a huge thing for everyone along the Windsor path. And he belongs to Cinch and he's asking for, um, conditions. So, and then I got from a city planner. And the city planner is Rob Bruce. The massing and articulation of the building are very appropriate to the site. However, the style is more consistent with the industrial uses to the south and east and will likely become dated in the near future. I suggest reskining the building in a flat roof, traditional Mediterranean design to reflect the historical residential character of the area and help it blend with the residential properties to the north. I believe that the only changes to the building would be the finishes and the floor plan should not be affected. It is a different style. If a different style is not possible, eliminate the eighties checkerboard paint pattern, which reduce the potential of it appearing dated or too industrial. The projects, the project descri- description states that the project will include fifty-four residential units, twenty-eight, which will be studios, sixteen will be one bedroom, ten will be two. which will be studios, sixteen will be one bedroom, ten will be two bedroom. Of the fifty-four units, the developer is agreeing to officially provide at least five percent of the units as affordable. He is actually proposing to provide almost ten percent. This unit breakdown affordability would be significant assets to Altadena as it will provide housing opportunities to the young adults and our families that are just starting their careers and not yet earning enough to afford a large apartment or even market rent anywhere safe and sanitary. The large number of studios and one-bedroom units will keep rents within reach of many of our younger Altadineans. When property values and rents rise dramatically, as we've seen here, Altadineans that grew up here can can't afford housing here when they are starting their careers and families in their hometown where they usually had it have a substantial support network. They often leave the area and the community loses their experience, knowledge and love of the community. I find the project to be very well-designed and only have minor comments. I wish that more of the projects that I worked on in my career as a city planner were this well-thought-out. Please let me know if you have any questions or would like further clarification, that's Rob Bruce. Okay, and then I have um. Kathy Jackson, this is the last one. I attended the community media meeting on August twenty first regarding the mixed-use development at twenty two fourteen North Windsor. We were not able to ask questions, but were required to present them for later response. As of this writing, I have not received a response to my question nor received a list of questions presented by others present and the response, when will we receive the responses? My questions and concerns, what type of business will be included? Any business would cause additional traffic and congestion. With only a few spaces set aside for business, where will overflow parking go? Most likely on Windsor to add to the congestion at the intersection. The building does not fit into the aesthetics of the area. Other than Gordy's and the business at the corner of Woodbury and Windsor, this is very that which is very well camouflaged, the area north of Woodbury and Windsor is residential. A fifty-four-unit apartment building does not fit and will take away from natural sight lines. Fifty-four units can average to at least a hundred and four bodies, possibly a hundred and four cars. Eighty parking spaces will not accommodate a hundred and four cars. Plus guest parking for fifty-four units and the business parking will end up on Windsor. With the building so close to the intersection and right at the section of the street where it narrows to one lane, what is the plan to minute me mitigate traffic backup? With only one entrance and exit, traffic will back up into the street causing additional congestion. I live on Alberta, the Col de Sart, off Windsor. On heavy track traffic days, it takes up to five minutes to get off of my street. The addition of of at least a hundred and four more cars will increase traffic and congestion. I do not think this project should be approved. Something considerable considerably smaller would work well. There may be a tri quadplex, two single-family dwelling or a dog park would even better. We do not have one in the area, thank you for your consideration, responses to my questions. Okay, that's, that was the last one I received.
So are there any other questions or concerns? Discussion?
So ju- just um Veronica, could you give me the Cinch, I know that's a abbreviation. What's their full, full thing?
Okay, Cinch stands for the street Sacramento. El Nido. Um. I don't know, but there uh it's the name of the streets that belong to the association, I can get them for you.
Okay, thanks.
When my head is clear, I can call them.
I make sure I got them noted in our public comments properly.
Oh, okay, I'll get them.
Okay, and Dorothy?
I'm sorry if uh you mentioned this Veronica, but of the, I think you said ninety ninety-two, ninety-something people gave responses, was there a general breakdown of?
I sent all those to you in the packet.
Right, but was there a number?
Basically, what I had broken down was um. Let's see, I had the numbers, but it's it's something and I don't have them right here in front of me.
Like fifty or?
No, it was like probably seventy-five percent were worried about traffic. Yeah, you can look back through them, but the majority of them is traffic, um noise, the height of the building, those are the three main things.
Thank you.
And just to let you guys know, if you walk Windsor and you walk on the same side, there is actually an apartment building, it's behind the house that's there and you don't notice it, it blends in very well, it's two stories. And there are several two-story homes on that street that you don't see. They're there, but they're well-hidden, so it's not like that street has all single uh family homes. And there are several businesses there, several businesses on that street. So that's just to give you a little bit about the street, unless you walk down that side of the street, you really don't notice it.
Okay, so um. Do you, are you ready to make a motion Veronica tonight then?
I am, if there's no more questions, I'd like to make a motion. I move, I move that we uh send this uh project uh to the town council for approval with the following conditions. One, that the architect, owner and contractor tractor work with the county to complete a traffic study and that the project incorporate the findings of that study. That sidewalks be put in place. That the architect and owner and contractor work with the county to accelerate the project delivery of the traffic signal that was already approved by the county for Windsor. So there was a, there is, it's already in the budget, they just stopped on it and there's a traffic signal and I'm sure that could be worked into the the traffic study. That the architect, owner and contractor incorporate ways to reduce noise and traffic impacts to the neighboring property properties um near the building. That thought and consideration be given to changing the entrance and exit to the building to reduce the traffic impacts and increase the flow of traffic throughout the area. So those are my conditions.
A second.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Okay, Dor- uh Dorothy?
Yeah, so just in the wording, because traffic study is such a a broad statement and so you know, the traffic study should look at um, you know, a complete street environment there because again, if we are going to even.
You want to make a ma- do you want to make a motion to amend the motion, Dorothy, is that what you're asking for?
I mean, consider an active transportation um, you know, in traffic.
Are you making a motion to amend the motion?
I would like to make a motion to amend the motion, to have the traffics, to have the traffic study include a complete street or an active transportation um component to that. They have to look at not just, not just putting in a sidewalk and making sure it's safe, but for all users. And so that would be like a complete street um design. So the traffic study would be focusing on a complete street design, which would allow safety from users coming from everywhere, the freeway, you know, the.
Dorothy, that's not, okay, wait, you're making a, you're making an amendment to the motion. So what verbiage do you want to add into the, are you recommending that we add, are you moving that we add into the motion that uh is on the floor?
I I would say as part of.
As the verbiage.
Yes, as part of the uh traffic study to consider or implement, if we want to do that, a, you know, a complete street uh intersection and the streets leading to it, so it would be.
Dorothy.
At active transportation design, how's that? In the traffic study uh to consider an active transportation design.
Okay, so how how's this um?
We need a second.
Right.
Need a second.
Donald, Donald seconds.
Yes.
Now, do I have to accept that?
No.
No, we have to vote on adding that verbiage.
Since it's been seconded, if I can, if I can, is that a thing the county does, is active transportation design studies?
They can consider complete street design, so it could be complete street or active transportation.
Okay, so which is it going to be?
Right, thank you.
May I ask a question, is that appropriate?
Well, we have a first, we have a fir- hang on, hang on, we have a first and a second on the motion, so we can discuss.
I don't think we have the verbiage of the motion yet, though. Is it, is it active transportation design, is it complete streets thing?
I think Dorothy, you said active transportation design.
Yeah, I mean, that's ultimately the.
Okay.
New language.
We're not going to spend an hour on this, active transportation design is what you said.
Right, and the idea is to just consider.
Dorothy, that's the, we're on active transportation design and we had a second by Donald for active transportation design and Daniel is stretching.
No, I was trying to turn back on my light.
In the sunlight, okay, in the sunlight in Hawaii.
Yeah.
So, okay, so now is there discussion about that verbiage which has been put in and seconded, active transportation design?
The reason I seconded was that um, and I read through all the comments that were submitted and awful lot of them had to do with concerns by neighbors who live in the neighborhood that the amount of traffic that's already going up and down Windsor was pretty high already. So uh and several of them asked specifically in a way that I perhaps did not follow as closely as I might have, um if the county was going to do further study of this. And to the extent I understand what Ms. Wong is asking for, we're asking for the county to do additional study about the impact of an already busy street. And 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 that was why I seconded, I think it's a good idea.
Right, and and remember, there's already, there wa- there must have been a traffic, some traffic study, which we can go back and look at um for them to have approved a um traffic light. I I, okay, I see Sylvia and I see Daryl and I want to make sure that everybody's and Billy that um uh heard appropriately, but we've spent almost an hour on this now and we remember we're going to do this again two weeks from now, so um uh Sylvia, your hand was up first.
Um, no, negative, my hand is not up.
Oh, it is up, actually, do you see the little hand on your screen? Oh, that's my hand, never mind, that's me. Never mind, when I put my pointer up, it makes a hand, okay, sorry, okay, Daryl, you're next, and then Billy.
So they were speaking about the fact that they already have a traffic plan going on, that they're going to be including this now to affect what they were already doing. So we, that Veronica spoke of this. So I I don't see why we need to add.
I think all we're doing, I think all we're doing to the motion, Daryl, is.
I I understand what she's asking for to be added to the motion and I'm speaking against adding to the motion.
Oh, all right. Okay.
All I was gonna say was the same as Daryl is that we don't forget, we already have the on the motion on the table before councilmembers long for the council of the county to do a traffic study. That was already in the motion from uh from councilmember.
Right, I. Okay, I think, I think the most is to, is to make the most, take, make the motion say a traffic study including, now I forget what it is, complete whatever.
Active transportation.
Active transportation, yeah, just to add those three words to the motion about the traffic study, including or four words, including active transfer, I I don't think that it's a big deal and the and anyway, that's just my opinion, I can't vote, so.
Uh I have a question, it just doesn't matter, clarification. My understanding is that this amendment is asking for us to do a more comprehensive, rather asking the county to do a more comprehensive traffic study than the traffic study initially uh in Veronica's.
I don't, I don't know, let me say to this you, to you guys. So we know that there's already been a traffic light approved for some area there by that location. They had to have done a traffic study in order to have approved and budgeted for a traffic light. What we don't know is at right tonight, at this moment, we don't know whether that study included, Dorothy, please, if the, that's the, that the, that that study included the active transportation piece. So all we're doing is we're rec- remember, this is a recommendation to the Altadena Town Council that they review and we are recommending um to the Altadena Town Council and saying to them, we'd like you to recommend to regional planning that the project be approved with the following conditions. This said, there's a whole nother thing, we go through this in two weeks. So I I just don't think it's, it's mind-boggling about just doing this, we can vote on the, the, let's vote on the motion. Um, so the motion is to add including, say it again, including active.
Transportation.
This is why I have that the architect and owner, the architect, owner and contractor work with the county to complete a traffic stay with a focus on active transportation design and that the project incorporates the findings. That's the proposed change that I have.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay.
It's already been seconded.
Yeah, it was seconded, so we, so let's vote on changing the verbiage on the motion to include the piece that Daniel added. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, put your hand up, please, so I can count. Three, is that right? Okay, five, okay, so um and and if anyone abstaining? Okay, so Daniel, you have the roll call, so we have five negatives and how many positives? Do we have, do we have, I'm not voting. Um, Amy's not here, so we have fourteen voting, right?
Yep.
So nine.
Yep, so I would.
Nine in favor, nine in favor. Um, five opposed, okay, that, the motion to change the verbiage is carried. Um, although, so let's, and we had a second on the first.
On the motion itself, there's already been a second.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the motion with the approved changes, all those in favor, say aye. Okay, all those opposed, raise your hand so I can count. None, right?
I abstain.
Oh, okay, I hadn't gotten there yet, sorry, Daryl.
Yeah.
Okay, abstentions, one, correct? Any, I should say, any other abstentions? Okay, one abstention, so uh the motion is carried to recommend to the Altadena Town Council in two weeks. So we will see you um gentlemen back here in two weeks um at the Altadena Town Council meeting. And um we'll go through this again, the good news is that most of the people on here today will also be in that meeting. All right, thank you, thanks very much.
Thank you all so much, everyone, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your time as well, okay, so.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so now we're going to go to Chris O'Malley who has a present, has a pro- a project that he wants to um present to us.
Okay, hi, everybody, um Yvonne, you still there? There she is, what's up, Yvonne? Uh, so it's a residential project at five fifty West Terrace, they want to add stuff to their house and they live in a weird-shaped lot, so I am just going to let Yvonne sort of explain it. It seemed a little too complicated for one of those, they want to extend the, you know, pre- present and vote in one meeting thing, so Yvonne, I have um this stuff here. Uh if you want me to go anywhere on it, I can um, but it's, it's up to you, I don't know what you can see or if you just want to explain it.
Yeah, so this is uh the, it's, you know, a wider lot than the majority of the lots on West Terrace because it's at the corner, but it's also has the full radius at the corner. Uh, it's a family of three, it's currently a three-bedroom home with fairly small rooms. And with COVID, everyone's kind of needing home offices and a little bit more space, so the owner is uh seeking to add an additional room and a couple more bathrooms to a existing three-bedroom, one bathroom h- house. Um, so we're having a hard time developing an addition that meets the setbacks um that are required. so we're having a hard time developing an addition that meets the setbacks um that are required here. Uh we are required to have a twenty-foot setback, pretty much the entire frontage of the property. So all around the corner and the, I guess, the west side of the property as well. And then because it's wider, we're also required to have a seven and a half or seven foot five inch um side yard setback, both on the south end and on the east side of the property. Um the majority of the lots here are fifty-five or so feet wide, so most of the side yards are more like five feet, five inches or so. Um they currently have a house that's kind of set on a forty-five degree of the lot. Uh the addition is proposed to be in the kind of north corner of the lot uh and currently the northeast east corner of the house is about five feet from the property line on the side. So we are asking for a side yard setback modification as well as a front yard setback modification so that we can try to create rooms that are not trapezoidal or funky shaped, shaped so that, you know, they're more usable. Um, some of the reasoning is, you know, most of the lots along terrace don't um have the current five foot five requirement for side yard setback. So asking for the five foot seems fairly reasonable and in line with the rest of the neighborhood. Uh there is another lot on the opposite corner of West Terrace that is also of a similar shape. Thanks, Chris. Um and they have an addition on the north side that actually protrudes beyond what the neighbors have. So most of the neighbors on West Terrace are around twenty foot, twenty foot setback from the front of West Terrace. Uh I believe based on the GIS maps available in the county, it looks like that one is protruding closer to um like twelve, it's the setback is around twelve at the closest or twelve-ten, something like that. Uh so our proposal, if you look at it just like down the street straight, it's maybe nineteen-nine, the the farthest north corner that sticks into it, sticks in like three inches. Um the actual front yard setback, if you measure it perpendicular to the curve, is more like fourteen. I don't, I don't have the numbers in front of me. Sorry, I'm traveling, so that's why Chris is doing the presentation.
It's uh fourteen and so
fourteen, ten, fourteen-eight, I don't remember.
Yeah, fourteen-eight.
Um, yeah, so and then if we scroll down to the plans, you can see basically we just have a um a decent sized master bedroom with an oddly shaped master bathroom trying to fit within the kind of geometry of the existing property. Adding another little guest bathroom for two of the bedrooms and then in the front is, I mean, I'm just kind of going through it. This does not require a modification, but in the front, there's another bathroom for the existing front bedroom. Um, the height, the height limit, we're pretty much well within the height limits of this area. I forget, I think it's twenty-something and we're well under twenty. Um, so really, it's just that little corner on the north that's sticking into what would be apparent down West Terrace. Everybody else is at twenty feet. This would be at like nineteen-nine if we disregard the curve of this property. So um if you have any questions, I think that's kind of all I really have. We're asking for two modifications essentially.
Okay, are there any questions? Comments, concerns?
Can we go back to that last screen?
I don't know who was sharing. Yeah, okay, thank you.
That one, Daryl?
Is that the one you wanted to see, Daryl? You're on mute.
Yeah, and thank you. That's, I I can finally see that the overview was great, but it's nice to see these details. So I'm good. Thank you very much.
Okay, great, perfect. Um, okay, can Chris, can you stop sharing for a minute so I can see people? Yeah, okay. Anybody else have any questions, concerns? I know Chris is going to go do his due diligence the next month so that we'll have them back in, I think, plan is to have them back in October. Um for the meeting. For
Um, I just have one question. Is the, is the twenty foot, is, are you running into that because of our average? Or is it because there's a county setback for future sidewalks?
Um, that is in your rules and regulations, the twenty feet setback. It's basically an average of the neighbors or whoever is the smallest, I believe.
Yeah.
The neighbor is twenty feet, so and looking at the overview of all the properties, they look like they're all fairly close to twenty feet. If some of them might be a little further, some of them might be a little, you know, closer to the street, but in general, it looks like it's around twenty.
Hmm, because we did change that where it, it should be the small, uh you know, the smallest. So I was just looking at the street. It looks like some are less than twenty. Um, but yeah.
Corner is definitely less, so, but I don't know if they, if we can just count that one or not.
Yeah, I'm not sure. It does look like they would potentially have setbacks um for future sidewalks on the street. Um so just make sure you check with the county on that because we've had people run into that issue, so.
Will do.
Anything? Anything else for anybody? Okay, so we will expect to see this project again um in October uh unless anybody has any other questions. Okay, thanks very much for your time. Oh, was there somebody had?
I just wanted to thank Yvonne for waiting so patiently.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
While we worked, nobody ever said that we didn't give a lot of thought and discussion to these things, so. You know, that's
If you guys think of anything I should look into, you know, feel free to email me. Let me know.
Okay, uh send those to Chris. I mean, I'm, I'm talking to the committee now. Um, any questions, comments, whatever, send them through Chris and he'll get you what you need. Um, okay, uh we will move on to general public comment. I did not receive any emails um for a general public comment for tonight. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting then.
Okay.
I can second that.
Daryl second, Daryl second.
Who made that, Sylvia?
Yeah, Sylvia motion, Daryl second.
I raised my hand. Look at me, I'm raising my hand.
I know. I, I, anyway, if you guys not have
You, everybody, thank you.
Pointer not changed the hands when it puts on time. Anyway, okay. Um, thanks very much, everybody. Thanks for all your hard work and um, you know, we're doing all this do better. And no, it's, it, it took the amount of time. That's, that's right. That's what I said at the beginning of the meeting. It's gonna take a while. Okay.
Thanks, Diane.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Bye bye. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Stay safe. Okay.